Good evening. We'll call the City Council meeting on Monday, June 16th, 25th and 29th. I order priests' rights for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, we'll call Amanda.
Mark Finner.
Here.
Shannon Harvey.
Here.
The Lutler.
Here.
Doug Branch.
Here.
Ted Petrie.
Here.
Josh Williams.
Here.
Kat Beckman.
Here.
Adam Hough.
Here.
Darrell Lutler.
Here.
All right.
Okay, uh, we can skip over number four because everyone's here. Uh, we do have a shot on the phone with us too. Is there a speech turning as a person to get a contact? Um, we can skip over five. We have a public hearing. And we can go to number six, input from the public. If you wish to address the council, please step up to the podium on your left and state your name and access for the record. Hello, the public.
Oh, Mr. President, by my, uh, I know we have some folks here, both the applicant for the conditional use permit that was tabled to tonight, which is agenda item 11D1A on page four of your agenda. And, and some folks that were here from the neighborhood who had some concerns about this. I just wanted to clarify at this point that the council has no suspend rules to allow for public discussion on that agenda item at that point in the agenda as distinguished from requiring that a cap on that.
I think that's okay. Does anyone have any adjustments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone wants to talk about something other than that? Oh, no. Otherwise, we'll go on to number seven, cost communications, letters and other communications from citizens. You have anything?
You do have a communication that I shared relative to that, again, that conditional use permit matter. Uh, I will, uh, address that for the record at when we go through that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Zina, we will go to number eight, council reports, boards committees, and missions. Yes, Tom.
Um, please before.
No, not yet. Okay, please.
Um, I mean, it's with the big, their big event that's coming up with Cartel at the end of the week. I'm just new to it. I'm getting used to the big, big, uh, that's what they're gonna come with then.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I, you know, it's our primary mission to see them tonight on our agenda and also talk about a buffer zone for, uh, I don't know if we guys call it notches weeds, but not only are they allowed to grow their, uh, their notches weeds, a little taller than others because of, uh, the acreage they have and not getting against the ordinance. So we thought of, uh, having a buffer zone so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, there's all those great things happening in our library. Um, Terry presented some information about, um, all the votes that she's done with the school district and her, um, the new art display for the dramatic place center that's up. And, um, food programming that's happening this summer. So when they have a new book test and new, new story board out at Landmark.
There you go.
Landmark.
Anyone else?
Just had one, one of the people at Suzie Q asked me if anything happened with the dredging of the end of the river by the bearded.
You know, we, we haven't heard anything more. I want to say it was, gosh, March or April. We had a meeting with representatives of Corps of Engineers, Chicago office, uh, folks from Suzie Q and Seagull Marina over there that's interested in harbor users. Uh, there is not money programmed for a full blown maintenance stretching this year. But my understanding, when the Chicago district people left, they were going to see if there was the ability to make some resources available to at least come in and top off the shoals that have developed the channel entrance. Uh, I can follow up on that. We have not received an confirmation one way or the other. But it is a very real concern.
There's a TV.
Yeah, and you don't want to be coming down on it in rough weather and lose control. I would follow up and report that next council.
Anything else? Okay, uh, June number nine, city manager.
Okay, sharing my report for tonight. I would mention I didn't have it listed up on here, but yes, we are still talking into the the hockey puck on the central table here, which is not our normal sound system. Uh, Rick Powell, our IT director did give me an update just before the meeting that components for, uh, the work that's to be done on the system have started arriving here. And there is a project planning meeting with the video better contractor next week. So we should at least have a more definitive timeline and plan of attack going forward. Something's made it here from Asia, apparently.
I just want to ask a question.
Yeah.
Um, the company that we're dealing with, it's the company that we've been dealing with for a very long time?
The company that supplied the original system, yes.
Right. And we've been down with, um, with this system, so we haven't been able to, um, get some of the information out clearly to our residents.
Yep.
And I'm just wondering, are they going to still charge us the same amount or monthly? I don't know how, how we're charged.
I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a maintenance fee. This was a capital purchase about 10, 11 years ago for current system.
Okay, and it's not so much maintenance, uh, not doing its job.
Right.
So I, I don't know if they're, you know, it seems to me that they should have a giving so that we get some of the, some of the equipment and stuff.
That's, that's not the proposal we got. I mean, I, I don't disagree with you, but I can give voice to that, but.
In all fairness, you know.
But don't, don't hold it back.
Thank you.
Respectfully, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it's my report. It's my report. Sorry. Yeah. Uh, by the way, our staffing updates. Uh, we, we still are out there for community development directors, city planners. Honestly, I do plan to defer to the city manager on that. With that position now built, uh, police department evidence professional, our administrative professional evidence associate. We're close there, Chief. I know the interview's completed.
Yeah, we'll, we'll announce that next meeting.
Okay, hopefully announced on next meeting, July 7th. Uh, next up, uh, I, I think most of the community knows pretty well, but, uh, uh, the city council did on Friday, so, oh, excuse me, Friday, June 4th, announce the, uh, it's Friday, June 6th, announce, uh, the appointment of Kyle Cordell as new city manager for Two Rivers. Did you want to speak to that, that, that House President? Basically, Kyle will be starting with us, uh, here in Two Rivers on Monday, August 4th. He's currently, uh, director, or I'm sorry, uh, management, uh, yeah, right, director of management services and deputy city clerk with the village of Lake Zurich, Illinois, has his undergraduate degree from Eastern Michigan University and master of public administration degree from Northern Illinois University, has about 12 years in the village of, uh, Lake Zurich. Uh, the only other thing I would mention, and I've, I've been in touch with the council president on this, um, some members of the public have been wondering what, uh, the, uh, outcome was of the, the public feedback at the public meeting greet that was held on, uh, 29th of May over at the community house, while much of the material related to candidate assessment, like testing results and backgrounds are confidential, the, uh, thoughts that were shared from members of the public are the product of a public meeting and, um, probably are, are fair game for disclosure as a public document. So the intent is that, that report, which was provided in writing to city council, will be, uh, put, uh, out there as an addendum to burn attachments of those minutes from the public session. That's after, I did not discuss that with general council, but that was after discussing with our labor council. The, I didn't know council had anything to add to that.
No, I think it's good, yes. All the meetings, all of that were there, we just had to make sure the comments were heard.
Understanding it was not a poll or a ballot. It was soliciting comments, uh, as to impressions, so. So that is, that is that. Looking forward to patents already in touch, requesting background information, doing his homework. So getting ready to hit the ground around the two rivers. Looking forward to working with it for in the interim periods. Uh, I would like to point out, and, uh, we did do a Facebook post on this last week. I think I shared this with council as well. There is an additional in-person open book session, uh, to be held by our contract assessors from Accurate Assessing. That is tomorrow from 3:00 to 6:00 PM here in chambers, uh, at City Vault. Um, there are appointments available. If you go to info@accurateassessor.com, uh, they're taking appointments at 15 minute intervals. I can tell you it's 5:30 PM today. We were still five out of 12 appointments available. They will also, uh, people can come as walk-ins, but do understand that the appointments will be handled first. The deadline to file objections to 2025 assessments is 48 hours in advance of order review. Since order review meets at 4:00 PM next week, Tuesday, 48 hours prior to that would be Sunday afternoon. So, um, unless you're filing an objection online, if you want to be talking to a person, it would be good to come to Open Book or to go to reach out through Accurate's website by Friday of this week. They don't, they don't staff on Saturday and Sunday. Order review, uh, does meet next week, Tuesday, starting at 4:00 PM. They will meet for, for a minimum of two hours. That's statutory. They'll meet until they're done hearing appeals. Uh, the deadline to file an appeal with the city clerk is 48 hours prior to the meeting. And again, note that that deadline falls on Sunday. Amanda, how is that handled as of June 19th?
Yes.
It is. And those, those appeals can come either through an accurate or the clerk, or is accurate referring people to the clerk?
Yeah, they have a lot of.
They have to come through the city clerk. So, uh, there's timely reminder there for order review. Uh, a change of assessment notices were mailed out to any of the properties that did have changes in their assessments. Otherwise, it'd still be a 2024 assessment. Uh, we do have an update that came out last week at the state level from, on tourism in Wisconsin. And also some information on, uh, survey study being done locally on the impact tourism, like Joe Matt Center Tourism Director, uh, to speak to that.
Thanks, Greg. Uh, the public or council, our, there's copies of this report, uh, around the table there. Uh, happy to report that state Wisconsin saw a 3.3, 3.3% increase year-on-year in revenue related to tourism. So that marked third year, uh, post COVID, the state has actually realized a gain, um, and pretty impressive gain as well. Uh, Mantua County, uh, realized $227 million in revenue, or I should say, uh, revenue brought in through tourism. Um, and that's a variety of different tourism, uh, indices that they use, whether it be, uh, room tax revenue, uh, employment, uh, labor, uh, offsetting taxes, uh, sales through, uh, lodging, sales through attractions, and things like that. So that's all the included amount. Um, and as a county, we realized a modest increase, uh, just under 1% year-over-year with that. This, uh, document, uh, the slideshow that Greg has up, and then this one can be found on exploretrewavers.com under the about page. There's also an accompanying spreadsheet that goes with this that looks at the state as whole and breaks down county to county to county. It's a pretty lengthy spreadsheet, uh, Excel spreadsheet. That will also be made available at exploretrewavers.com on the about page as a downloadable or previewable PDF. Uh, should be there again. And then Greg talked about a survey that Explore Trewers, uh, Board of Directors has launched. So they launched that beginning of last week. Uh, it's a kind of a beginning, a step for more, uh, getting a gauge on, um, impact of tourism, uh, really at kind of a high level, not at a granular level, uh, and, and also getting a better understanding of what the appetizer or capacity is for our business owners and those managers, you know, uh, their willingness or wanting to fill out, uh, you know, surveys. So it's, it's a beginning step for us. Uh, so it's a multi-phase approach for the explore when it comes to the survey. We posted it, uh, online last week. Uh, and we posted at the top of the social media page, Facebook for Explore Trewers. And that'll be there, uh, right at the top if people see and access that. And there's a mark, yep, that goes along with that. And that's in the city manager report. Uh, we're giving it probably till the end of June to see if people want to go ahead and respond online with that. And then from there, almost the entire board for the Explore Trewers is going up, will be here and seeing, uh, the business owners who are moving. Uh, so roots on the ground, um, and doing that properly until the middle of August. Uh, we'll spend the remainder of August compiling that data, and it's our hope to be able to disseminate that out to the people we have during later day. Um, multi-go, like a full approach with, uh, that, one, we want to get as many people participating in the survey as possible. But we're more importantly looking at as an opportunity in those one-on-one conversations to build a good rapport with our business community. Uh, have them ask questions as well about what's exploring on, getting to know who the explorer board is, myself as well. Uh, and really working on how do we further, uh, build those bridges of communication and have every business owner feel like, whether they're completely dependent on tourism, partially dependent on tourism, or not at all, but still they're an active stakeholder in the success of tourism and ultimately all overall economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. As a number seven questions on the entire effort that I can follow up, uh, always feel free to reach out to our tourism. Um, Mike, uh, Mike Mathis, our perks and rent director, can speak to the public kayak series. It's getting some real good response so far.
Evening, everyone. On Saturday, we started our, uh, Percever paddling program, public paddling program, uh, here in Trewers. Uh, so it's been coming for about three years. We've been working on this, dealing with delays and grant funding and things like this. But we have our kayak week. We had a full program of 12 individuals participating on Saturday. And we went on a beautiful paddle up the West River. Eight of the 12 people that participated have never been in a kayak before. So, uh, we were proud to be able to connect the people to the water and get them comfortable out in the kayaks. Um, I will pick you up your action from a few weeks ago. We did do that paddling show that we, uh, all told you about. Uh, so yeah, that one was excellent as well. And we did paddle East River as part of that, and that we can do. So say that we can promote our waterways and awesome and natural water.
Good stuff. I should add, I'm in a previous coastal management career. Um, over at Sandy Bay Highlands subdivision, most all of the work to be done by advanced construction, our contractor for getting the basic utility infrastructure in and the roadways graded and gravelled, uh, facilities for stormwater management in, uh, is completed. As noted, Sandy Ridge Drive, Raleigh Court, and Orchard Lane are all graded in gravel. The Raleigh Point Trail north of Lake Rees Way is now properly relocated to the east side of the street. So, uh, when everything's done, there'll be a low profile curb, a terrace area, and then the trail proceeding north. And some stormwater management areas to the east of the trail as a network. County, oh. Contractor has been on site for a couple of weeks now doing electric and fiber insulation. Brian, how close are we?
Uh, it's in, um, facilities as far as where it's based on.
Okay, conduit is in and they're, they're sliding the conductor in the, uh, fiber group. Um, city electric plus, uh, chargers or, uh, I'll say it that loud, spectrum are, uh, uh, both installed. Uh, final restoration activity is ongoing and there will be a proposed contract dibs coming to the council later this summer. We expect. We expect it in August for curbing out or paving the streets, that sort of thing, which is more budgeted activities. We have one lot sold, one offer set to close, I'm in July, I believe, and four lots under contract for Scott Homes, the Lake Shore Residential. I think two of those were going to close on those contracts by the end of this month. So hopefully we see some more reconstruction activity up there extending into Phase Three. It should be noted, we're almost a month into it as of June one, properties in Phase Three of the subdivision are now listed with white graffiti on their corner, so from here in Two Rivers. And the picture on the left is one of the stormwater, what do you call that, man? Biofilters, biofilters, under construction, that, those areas will ultimately have natural vegetation and will be part of processing stormwater runoff inside. And they will be contained within Eastmans that are part of those corner lots as close to several parcels on that city. There was the annual spring e-waste recycling event held down at Utility Offices last week. Some of the numbers there, great effort led by the utilities and their contractor, but with volunteers from various city departments. Some quantity shown there, TVs for thirty-inch, fifty-eight of them, monitors, smaller TVs, one-hundred-and-eighteen circular and U2, I assume, and straight fluorescents, Brian? Fourteen-hundred-and-ninety fluorescent lumineers of different types, one-hundred-and-nineteen CFLs, they're still out there, one-hundred-and-nineteen LED bulbs, four-hundred-and-fifty-nine candescence, and I contributed three pounds of these, I think four-hundred-and-ninety-seven pounds of alcohol and batteries turned in for recycling. So you think about it, that's a pretty large quantity of electronic waste out of our homes, not in the landfill, added into proper recycling and disposal chain. Thanks to everybody involved. And this followed about three weeks after a really busy, really successful e-recycling direct, electronics recycling drive by the Octagon Act. Good stuff. Thanks to everybody. The Water Department is doing unidirectional flushing around the city, starting in the area of Washington Street Bridge. Andrew, you want to speak to that briefly? For a couple of years now, you've brought up this method of flushing, which we've been using more thoroughly, purge contaminants out of the system, I mean contaminants that are meant to be there, we want to get out.
So the difference between this pollution and like what we've done in the past is we actually purposely close certain valves in the distribution system to get a high-velocity flush. So we know that our water filter plant cleans the water very well, it's very clean leaving, but we can get sedimentation in the water mains. Normal flushing won't actually pick that stuff up and get it out of the system. So this unidirectional flushing, we came up with this plan a few years ago, and we started implementing it, and we'll do a little bit every year. But the point is, is to actually give velocity up so we can get that stuff out of your homes or out of the water main. As far as like the homes go, we've been trying to put up these signs everywhere, so it's not great if you turn your water on while we're doing this, because if we have a lot of sediment that we stir up, you could bring it into your home. So we just ask, you know, if you just turn your whole water tap on, let it run for usually two to three minutes, it'll all clear up. But if you can avoid it, and you see the guys out in front of your home, try to give them a few minutes. Usually the average flush only takes about fifteen, twenty minutes, and they kind of move on to the next block. They are doing kind of the center part of the city here, probably kind of up towards, it'll be about halfway to the north. By the time they're done, that's going to take us most of the summer. So you'll see them kind of filtering through the center of the city as well. And then every year, we'll do different parts of the city, and we'll have it on location so we can make sure we keep the main street.
Well, I've got Andrew up there, not listed on my report, but last week, most everybody in town, I know I got, we got ours at home, should have received postcards notifying that the city's annual water quality report is available for review, that postcard mailing met our public notice requirements, or is part of meeting our public notice requirements for EPA and DNR. The full report is available, help me out, both online or you can request it.
Yep, so we do have it posted online on our website. If you prefer a paper copy, all you got to do is call down the Utility Office, and we will get you another one.
The analysis, our ranking letter doesn't exceed any of the EPA parameters, but it was a lot of information.
Yeah, we, I mean, it's mandatory that we do it by the DNR, that we put it all over to the public. We've got nothing to hide, everything's in there. I believe there are a few copies around here. Library.
There's one other spot, I can't clear it up wrong. I love the posted on the website under Utilities.
Yes. Yep. It's, I would encourage everybody to look at it too. Gina did a really good job a few years ago of making it really user-friendly and nice and easy to read, and we got some statistics for water utility out here, so I do her very well. Thank you.
Andrew, I have a question. Just to repeat, if they're in your neighborhood, you'll see crews on your street, and that sign will be posted somewhere on the street to indicate that they're flushing.
Yep, so we've been putting these, they're above this hall. We've just been putting them on the side of the hall, and we move them along as we go. It's very hard for us to notice, notify everybody when we're doing it, because it goes kind of quickly. So if you do see these kind of going in on your driveway and stuff, just kind of remember that they're in your area.
This colored water, not painted, you just want to let it run through the system, they're really, and how?
Correct. Yep. Yeah, it's still safe to drink, it's just not aesthetically pleasing.
But it could be possible that someone could turn on the water, the truck was already on, and they see this colored water, so I recommend running that through.
Yep. Yep. Try not to use your hot water if you can avoid it, so it doesn't get into your water heater, just try to run a cold tap.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Moving along, again, related to water, things are progressing with wet water surface labral replacement in the north-central area of the city. That's up last week, up to two-hundred-and-thirty-two public side services, one-hundred-and-sixty-one, I'm sorry, plus one-hundred-and-sixty-one public side lab or sewer lap replacement. Private side water services replaced number E2 so far, and thirty people have opted to have their private side sand and shower house replaced as well. Highway forty-two Memorial Drive project, again, it's pretty self-evident if you've driven it recently. I mean, the detour route has been gone for about three weeks. Paving should be completed this week, all that was really needed, yep, was the rightmost lane on the northbound side of the highway. There will be more work happening out there with removal of all barricade beam along the lakeside and replacement of most of it. There are some areas where, because of the distance from the lake and the trail, it meets the O C standards not to have barricade. One example I keep throwing out in the area opposite Columbus Street, where there actually will be a marked crosswater across the drive. There'll be an update mid-week. Man, I don't know that we know anything about the strike date that this is going to be.
Um, no.
Yeah, right, as of yesterday, traffic was limited, was limited to the left lane all throughout that. Overall, kudos, it's still early in the season, and the project is moving along. Speaking of things that are moving along well, Pierce Street through the middle of the Shota Park, that two-block stretch, which was budgeted for resurfacing this year along with paving of both existing parking pods or perpendicular parking areas off Pierce, plus creation of some new parking areas, especially in the area along the central playground, is now largely completed. That project, by the way, adding about fifty off-street parking spaces, or on-street if you want to do it that way, fifty parking spaces through the park. The base course was laid by Northeast Asphalt last week. Some of you met it perfectly, we're going to wait till this week to come back and put the top coat down. They actually got that done last week, and I arrived out there this afternoon, just around noon time, just as our trusty crews in white Jeep with the striking trailer behind it were departing the scene. But it looks good. In that upper right photo, you can see the little islands or commensas that will be landscaped and delineated, and have trees planted in each of them to break out the parking space, seven, six, or seven parking spaces per section. This is funded in part with city dollars, and some of the parking dollars are coming from the DNR stewardship grant for the system Friday. I'm not going to go through all of the notes here, but we are optimistic that all of the work will be done by the end of this week. In any event, it will be open by the end of this week, which is Beach Bash upcoming next, is our first major summer event down at the Shota. The park's looking good. You recall this one got started a little late because we had to hold up for that archaeological study. And there shows. Upcoming events, the Optimist Club Childhood Cancer Walk is coming up on June seventeenth, tomorrow, six P M. at the Shota Park, probably still an opportunity to get RSVP and participate. Our Concerts in the Park Series on Thursday night continues this week, the tourist community band with Treaties John Williams. Next week, the twenty-sixth, the Man of the World Band. That's also Sunday, Thursday, Sunday, Thursday kicking off of the Two Rivers. Friday Night Live is also going on, and this, our Friday, June twentieth, this Friday, the Derby Martinis on the Two Rivers stage downtown. Working with the Two Rivers Police Department, Two Rivers Parks and Rec, we thank Optimists and Fox Communities Credit Union for bringing the annual Bike Rodeo to Washington Park. That's next week, Tuesday the twenty-fourth, six to seven-thirty. Kids twelve and under, if they bring their bike and helmet, you can go throw fun, save course, games and prizes. First hundred and fifty kids get a free hot dog and water coupon. That coupon, I assume that coupon's there at the event? Good. Natural coupons, probably a better way to do it. Like I mentioned, next Sunday, next Thursday the twenty-sixth marks Sunday, Thursday commemorating Two Rivers status as holiday ice cream Sunday event at Burners in eighteen eighty-one. We're certain of that because we've got a huge sign. Usually serve close to two thousand, sometimes a little more Sundays, so twenty-five cents a piece. It's a great piece of American and a quick way to get your ice cream. Thursday, Sunday, Thursday. Like I said, Sunday, Thursday kicks off really our first big weekend summer. Beach Bash on Friday and Saturday down at Shota Beach with a full line of entertainment, a run, walk, midway setup on the park beach. Great activities kicking on five P M. Friday, all day, ten A M., eleven-thirty P M. on Saturday capped off with the Boom Construction Firework Show at dusk. We do have, they have a charity in our midst. Adam, if there's anything else you want to share with us.
No, you pretty much know that pretty good. You have to check out Carnival, the fireworks are always awesome.
We could have a day like today, that'd be just an update. The Shota is ready for the parades. Also, that weekend, that same weekend, the twenty-fifth annual Cool City Cruise and Car Show, Friday night cruise, the usual route from Q W Green Bay Manitowoc Campus, and it heads through downtown Manitowoc, up the lake shore into Two Rivers. Hang tags for folks in the cruise for five dollars to keep that hitch to the downtown parking once you get here. Central Park West, there'll be food trucks and a beverage stand, and live, it's Saturday, the car show runs all day, registration seven-thirty to ten. The show itself runs from ten to four. The best thing you can hope for is a good weather forecast with no hail in the forecast anywhere in the greater Midwest, because those classic carpal get a little nervous. There's also a major Mustang two round associated, National Reunion endorsed by Ford Motor, associated with this year's Cool City Classic Car Show. That all organized by Two Rivers Main Street with generous sponsors.
Greg, is there still going to be the Ford, you know, the water drive in Manitowoc?
Yes, yep, Friday night, per usual. Don't know if there'll be one or two lanes of traffic, kind of depends on a Saturday and a Monday drop, but definitely. Yep, and all the clearances have been made with the Manitowoc Police Department, which cooperates very nicely, have Two Rivers puts on a show, appreciate it, and likewise arrangements. Yes, sir. Senior Center has a fifty-fifty raffle, and sales will be happening during the car show, ten A M. to noon, to raise money for Senior Center programming a duly licensed downtown fitty-fitty. Coffee with a Cop continues, it was at Trader's this morning, I believe, gee, and is back over at the Senior Center on Wednesday, July two, nine A M. to, I'm sorry, I'm saying that at other times, ten A M. to eleven A M., and then it will be over at Chris's Cafe and Gifts on July fifth. Appreciate the participation, global businesses in the Senior Center. Getting close, of course, to Fourth of July, which is on Friday this year. Festivities down at Walsh Field, Creed Fireworks activities, family games and concessions, flag raising ceremony, seven-twenty concert by the community band, sponsor appreciation sponsors will make this happen, patriotic music this year again by Clipper City Courtsman, Real Tree for the holiday, opportunity to sing along with the courtsman, and then nine-thirty the fireworks. Major sponsor Sprang Farms of a number of great community sponsors and supporters of fireworks. The rain date is July fifth. We're not talking about any other rain dates. It's got to be one of those. This is a privately organized event held at Adler's Park, Cool City or Cool River Classic, Classic Boat Show, that is on July, July fifth, so Fourth of July weekend, Saturday, July fifth, noon to four P M. over at Adler's Park, chance to check out some classic boats. Fans on the Beach kicks into gear Fourth of July weekend, I think concerts future all Sunday this year. The Cougars take the stage from two to five-thirty P M. And I would just remind you that kids in it last week, we'll get a couple more days. Information on the activities that's due to Two Rivers, Mr. Nelson. The Lester Public Library Summer Program has begun. Jeff?
Yeah.
I'm happy to know that my almost-three-year-old granddaughter, a Manitowoc resident, shows a marked preference with two rivers slopper. Just a testament to the job you guys do.
Thank you. Our summer program began last Monday. Today, we are kicking off several new initiatives with our several to-go packs going out today. We started the Two Rivers Treasure Quest, where you get a team together and you go out in the community, visit various locations, you come to the library, pick up a packet, it sends you out into the community to discover public art, and then you have to go to a business, participating business, to cash in on special gifts and prizes. So please put a team together, get out there and do that. Top piece is coming up, that'll be June twenty-fifth, that's a Wednesday at two P M. Always a great time in the library front yard. So there's a lot going on. I'd suggest you go to lesterlibrary.org, and you get a full listing of what's going on at the library. I believe it's also on Explore Two Rivers, so you can find it almost anywhere. Come on down to the library and pick up one of our beautiful colorful brochures, which has everything in it as well. So great, see you at the library.
Thank you. All those great participations, I'm really impressed.
We have a couple of questions. Cool City Classic Boat Show. Sailor, they're sitting, you want to show their boat, can you do that and do the contact that brings it out there, or how's that work?
I guess if you go to the slide, actually Brian Irwin is the organizer, and there is the ability to register and participate by contact again. Both, thank you, I didn't highlight that word, both this phone number and email address are highlighted on the slide.
And another question, this is related to Harbor Park. I'm just wondering, Harbor Park has a lot of resources for boats to dock.
Postcard Park, yeah.
Oh, Postcard Park.
Yep.
And I'm wondering, are they, are those?
And I'm wondering, are they, are those resources operational, ready to go, how do you register for it? I know the service is a problem, moves might be necessary, are promoting that as a vacation to come, that you vote and consider city from the waterfront?
Can't speak to the extent of promotion, Mike, in what we address, the availability of services. I know we've had some people docked already this year.
I think we've had probably seven overnight dockings at the, at Coast Guard Park so far this year, and they call it community house, I think it's in our systemic correct system too, that you can register online to reserve the docking places, but definitely call it community house, really reasonable price on those as well. And then there is also restrooms and showers there that you can get a key to have access.
Is that down there?
There is, there is.
That's a wonderful service. Last year, a survey was doing promoted that, are we doing that all promoted, trying to bring people in?
I necessarily pushed it all the time, but we've been getting some hits on. Early on, we did some ad buys, fairly expensive, and some did West Odeon magazine, but through social media, I'm sure Parks and Rec and tourism cooperated on that. I also bowled for my deputy clerk for today, I don't know if she forwarded it to Matt and Mike, but a voter that noted with the change in water levels down there, it was tougher to dock. I'm not sure because there is all lower level, that's still should be fine, but you can follow up with that individual if I don't. So that was my report, I think, Mr. Robinson.
Sure, anything for us later? Could you go ahead?
Other than, you know, you could probably buy ringside seats for what appears to be a buddy fight over the state budget, the joint finance committee reps were, legislative leadership that was settling with Governor Huber, both sides have walked away from those discussions, saying, yeah, at least in the terms we hear nationally, at least mildly unpleasant things about the position of the other side. So joint finance is moving ahead and the legislature is moving ahead with the budget process, and so we'll, we'll wait and see. Be watching closely for updates in the morning because a lot of sausage making still happens in that city. We'll rely on updates from the movements, outlets on issues of interest to cities and Thank you for that reminder.
On to the agenda, and under A, we have presentation minutes. We have six, city council regular meeting for May 19th, city council work session for May 27th, city council special meeting for May 29th, city council special meeting for May 30th, city council regular meeting for June 9th, and city council special meeting June 6th, recommended action, we move to waive reading and adopt the minutes. Under B, we have minutes of meetings, we have five of those, we have the library board for May 13th, environmental advisory board for May 20th, city manager recruitment and selection committee for May 21st, public works committee from June 4th, and plan commission for June 9th, recommended action, we have motion to receive and file. Under C, we have department reports for the month of May, we have electric inspections, library parks and recreation, public work, safety, water tourism, recommended action, we have motion to receive and file. Under D, we have applications and petitions. The first one is a waiver of noise ordinance for amplified noise for snow fest on July 25th and 26th until 11:30 PM. Number two, we have applications for commercial haulers license, recommend for approval. There are four of those, Los Orskies Calling and Recycling LLC, owned by 15 V. Longstreet and Manitowoc, Waste Management of Wisconsin Incorporated, 1861 East Hallway Avenue, Green Bay, Manitowoc disposal lane from 1800 Johnson Drive of Manitowoc, and GDL Environmental, 428 High Street in Chilton. Number three, four and five are similar, they're for a temporary Class B beer license for Roaring Club of Two Rivers, like the Deathfire Agent, for abandoned beach for July 6th, July 13th, and August 3rd, and Shoah Beach, 2111 Pier Street. Then we have a temporary Class B beer license for the Roaring Club of Two Rivers, like the Deathfire Agent, for praying night concert series, we have two of those, one for July 18th, and the other one for August 1st, at Central Park West, 1700 Washington Street. And finally, we have a renewal license application for a period of July 1st, 2025, for June 30th, 2026, combination Class A beer and Class A liquor, we have one of those, combination Class B beer and Class B liquor on the nine of those, and back one for one. Recommended action, we have motion to approve the waiver and applications and authorize issuance of the waiver and licenses. We recommend an action for the consent agenda, is a motion to approve against consent agenda with the various actions represented. Looking for that motion.
I'll leave that motion to approve the consent agenda.
Anybody, any comments? Any council discussion?
Yeah, I think there's a page missing between five and six, because it's in the packet. The last sentence on five says, because Meyer noted that the residence in question has been previously cited for various issues, and then including, and the next page says word cloud exercise, I'm sorry for laughing, it starts on the point, including word cloud exercises. I don't think anybody's being warned about that. That's why I didn't say that until. I could use one.
Yes, yes. Was that under B?
On page five and six in our packet. The last sentence on five.
Yeah, we don't, we didn't cite the residence for, or have a word cloud, I'm quite sure something is in.
Okay. Mark, is that a fine? That's okay, Mark.
I just have a question about the waiver of noise ordinance extended for half an hour because, you know, the man is starting to die, or people like it, who may want to hear the thing. Are we going to do that regularly, or is that just by exceptional requests? Because I know I hear a lot of people with mail, noise, hard as a city, I'm just wondering if we can, if we can reach the actual, you know, I just wondered, is this going to be exception, or is this by whatever request?
It just comes in by special request.
It's frequent, special request, but it can only be approved by specific council action, otherwise the order doesn't cut, cuts them off.
If we typically do that, if we didn't do it, I expect we should make ordinance change, where did you run it?
I can't remember, I moved. I could be wrong, but the last time, it said no, something like that.
Well, we might want to consider that in a later date, but that was not my question.
Chief Minder, kind of something.
I would strongly urge not doing that because we have repeatedly revisited all these different ordinances to make them all consistent across the board. So these variances, yes, we typically do that, but it's for special large city events, whether it's private or public, Beach Bash, the Fish Derby, the list goes on, but we've always done that for large city events, large gatherings, where we allow that happen. I would not do that just outright because that would be problematic for a lot of citizens. Just my concerns.
That would be inconsistent with stated times for a lot of other things. I think that was recently cited with the ordinance.
Anything else?
I'm just going to help with there, we'll eat more.
Okay. Okay, gotcha.
Cool, what I think that we have on the work session agenda for 30th?
We will get on the work session, that's over the next.
Probably July 7th.
Any questions? We'll do a voice vote, all data, if I say aye. Anyone post? Period. On to the city council formal item. First one is proclamation designated Thursday, June 26th, 2025, as Sunday, Thursday. We're looking for a motion to read and adopt the proclamation.
I'm going to motion to read and adopt the proclamation.
Thank you, Bill, second by Shannon. Any council discussion? Seeing now, we'll do a voice vote, all paper, if I say aye. Aye, anyone post? Motion carried. On your side.
All right. Whereas, the first ice cream sundae was created in a Two Rivers Ice Cream Parlor by Ed Berners in 1881, and whereas Two Rivers is recognized in the National Register of Historic Places as the birthplace of the ice cream sundae, and whereas the Two Rivers Parks and Recreation Department, along with the entire community, will celebrate the creation of the ice cream sundae on Thursday, June 26th, 2025, the band concert, and the old fashioned ice cream social in Central Park. Music by Manitowoc, Manitowoc Green Band in Central Park on Thursday, June 26th, 45:00 PM, 8:00 PM, samples of homemade ice cream, ice cream sundae eating contest, inflatables, and children's games in Central Park on June 26th from 5:30 to 8:00 PM. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Thursday, June 26th, 2025, be designated as Sunday, Thursday, and Two Rivers in commemoration of this city's contribution, ice cream sundae lovers will fly.
Thank you, appreciate it. Come down and make sure.
To that, we say, take that, Ithaca, New York, and Evanston, Illinois, who have kind of shaky clients. Ithaca was 1892, and they cite a newspaper ad, and that just shows they were the first, you know, community to blow their money on newspaper advertising, and a bad, that's a lovely news for us.
Yeah, I think we should take it right in the future. The only city in the United States, and it's designated by the United States Postal Office, official, I'm staying, celebrating the homemade ice cream sundae.
Which was unveiled at the Washington, just a few years ago, postal ceremony.
I'm just beginning, city manager reappointments to boards, commissions, and committees.
Yes, I, these were, we need to continue serving, a month ago, I presented appointments to, however, Val pointed out to me that somehow we missed them on the list of county councils. I'm happy to recommend the council reappointment of Tracey Koch, who went on a term on the Environmental Advisory Board, expiring May 1st of 2027, and David Calista to the Community Development Authority for a term expiring May 1st of 2029. There still are four board and committee vacancies. I have applications to bring you for one vacancy on the Business Improvement District Board, the property owner in the downtown, that'll come at your next meeting. I think I've got a finalist candidate for an opening on the V I B C, and then we're looking for two alternates of zoning board of appeals. That's the only one of our boards and committees where we assure a forum there are alternates.
Right, we should get our.
We're okay there after all. It turned out that Mr. Inman was eligible for reappointment. So would recommend council approval of these two reappointments.
Okay. Motion.
Raise motion to reappoint. I expected the motion to reappoint.
Thank you. Any council discussions? Seeing now, we'll do a voice vote, all paper, if I say aye. Aye, anyone post? Period. On to C, automatic mutual aid fire agreement with town of Two Rivers.
Yes, Chief Murak comes forward, I just note that, you know, we rely heavily and are a vital part of a mutual aid network that's in July, and sometimes extends beyond the Capus, and saw with the recent wildfire on the Western River. This new agreement does sort of change the status of the relationship between the city and town of Two Rivers. I'll let the chief speak to that. Just one more bit of background for the record, and I've dealt with this with our attorneys, but just for the record, Weston Dunn does represent both the city of Two Rivers and the town of Two Rivers, attorney Dave Falowski is primary with the town of Two Rivers. So I did, on behalf of the city, and represented, did likewise approve a waiver of conflict on this issue. It seems a pretty basic, intermunicipal agreement. So just so you know, for the record, Weston Dunn properly flagged it, and I did on behalf of the city, sign off on a waiver of conflict in terms of their review of the agreement that's in front of you tonight. Now as to why we're doing it and how this changed, this is chief for you.
So as you had before, he was in auto aid agreement with the town of Two Rivers. As you remember, we have one other auto aid agreement that's with the city of Manitowoc. What was the reason for this? The reason for this is typically we respond with an engine company, out the door in about a minute, or five personnel, a minimum staff, I think it's four. And during the day, we might have six people, or maybe even more, depending on if that's at the station doing work, but I think we could all admit that four to five to six people is, there's a lot of tasks to be done, especially if there's a rescue to be done. You know, getting out the door in one minute, we can get there and get water on the fire very quickly, but there's a lot to be done on scene. And like I said, if there's a rescue being done, that requires even more people. And if I have my crews inside, I have a crew of two that goes inside, and two leaders one out on the outside of the house, if they get into trouble, I need people there, pull them out of, not a rescue. So working with Manitowoc, it's proven to work incredibly well. Since we started our auto aid with Manitowoc, I think we've seen that, that's show that, I'm sure that we put water in faster than we ever have before, and we've had significant decrease in the loss of, the cost to the property owners of the city of Two Rivers as far as the cost, the damage to their properties, because we've been able to play around quicker, able to get people out of the house quicker, including their pets. So this was a natural progression with the torn rivers. So when a flame tone drops, or the flame tones are basically special tones that come across on our radio that tell us that there's confirmed smoke and fire. So that's the only time that we would have them automatically respond, as we do with Manitowoc as well. They automatically respond with an engine company, or their full staff, depending on what they have available. So like I said, we have, the more people we have on scene initially, the quicker we can get the fire out, and the safer it's going to be for all the firefighters there. And we're the, the form of rescue, or whatever else we're doing on the scene. As we saw on the grass fire, we needed a lot of people here. There was a large section of the grass burning, and I think sometimes people don't realize, even though there's four vehicles coming from outside the county down, we only be six people. So there was a lot of vehicles, but there wasn't a ton of vehicles initially, but that helped, I think we all agreed, stop that fire very, very quickly. Only spread about six blocks, even though it was around 38, there was a, of grass, it could have been much worse if we didn't have the people.
But key issue other than Manitowoc and the crew tonight is Allen to Two Rivers. There's kind of a wide mutual aid that those other entities respond when specifically requested. This puts the town of Two Rivers in that same automatic mutual aid category that you described, where if flames, flames and smoke evidence of a working fire is there, dispatch automatically tones out, just the city of Manitowoc, of places is in place, the town of Two Rivers. Of course, that agreement works both ways, and that network works both ways. Likewise, if there's effectively evidence of a working fire in town.
Yeah, it does work both ways, okay. And there's benefits, benefits also, we have a ladder truck responding immediately to that area. We match that at our station. This is on the town board agenda.
Is there any questions, how much are concerned regarding this? Yes, Mark.
I'm a problem with this, but I just am curious, is this, I was lying to, you want the service too, or is it just?
It applies to both. The way it's set up with city of Manitowoc, by virtue of them having more stations than us, more staffing, it was decided between the two departments, if there was a structural fire, we send an ambulance to city of Manitowoc for coverage, equally send all their stations to a structural fire. If they need more equipment, like our ladder truck or our engine, they'll specially call that in. So that's, that's what that works with city of Manitowoc.
So that's, that's what that works with city of Manitowoc. With the town for exchanging fire engine for fire engine.
I'm sure you have a plan, but the district can't help ensure the safety or community of these vehicles or help on these areas or out that.
We still have people at the station and they would recall people in, for a time around whole time. So.
And the same.
Yeah, you would still have fire truck, you'd still have all the services you would expect out of the city of Two Rivers. And, um, just to take note, as, as Greg said, if there was some coverage, we get our own staff in, we use, uh, automatic aid, not auto aid system, but the aid system, we just recall other ambulance services here or fire engines to staff our station. I think that's, some people ask sometimes, why is Manitowoc fire engine or ambulance for somebody else sitting outside our fire station? Because they're covering our area because there's still expectations of the public. It does happen where there's two or three fires that happens. So I assure you that we have, uh, we have the interest of the city at all times.
Thank you.
Questions?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then we will give our motion to authorize City Manager to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
I'll make that motion to the City Manager. I'll press it.
Thank you. Second. Any council discussion? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote of mana.
Tim Meadre.
Aye.
Josh Mooney.
Aye.
Scott Leffler.
Aye.
Ann Monoski.
Aye.
Carl Leclerc.
Aye.
Janice Durbin.
Aye.
Phil Leclerc.
Aye.
Dan Grant.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you for that. Uh, on to D, minutes from boards and committees with recommendations requiring city council, city council action. First was Plan Commission Meeting in June ninth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, just further consideration of proposed conditional use permit requested by T R Storage LLC for additional self-storage facilities on a D two business zone property at twenty oh five Hawthorne Avenue. This was tabled on a hearing at the Royer Meeting on June second, twenty twenty-five, and matters of course referred to the Plan Commission, Plan Commission Meeting in June ninth, twenty twenty-five, further review and recommendation.
Uh, I would suggest you might want to, uh, since this is coming back from Plan Commission with further recommendation, you might want to reference the Plan Commission Minutes from last Monday, June ninth, page thirty-four in your packets. And discussion of this matter begins at the bottom of page thirty-four, continues over onto page thirty-five. I'll try to provide a brief, I know I'm noted for brief, uh, recap on it and then we'll, uh, assist, ask the assistance of the equally brief, this is a packet of our, our city engineer. Um, at the, um, last city council meeting, um, back on June second, uh, the council held the public hearing regarding, uh, this, uh, latest conditional use permit application for the property of two thousand and five forest. This one entails the construction of two additional self-storage building and use in plants for those. There were some concerns raised, uh, at the public hearing a few weeks ago regarding, uh, among other things, uh, issues of non-compliance with current conditional use permits, of which there are four that are left over to this property. So, for, as you know, the council voted to table, after concluding the public hearing, uh, council voted to table any action on this proposed conditional use permit to tonight's meeting, but in the meantime, to refer it to the Plan Commission, whose regular meeting was last Monday, uh, June ninth. Uh, the Plan Commission reviewed, uh, the existing conditional use permits, noted several areas of non-compliance. I might add several of which by the time of that meeting had already been corrected by the applicant. Uh, identified other areas that might need, based on feedback from, uh, the applicant, might need to be the subject of requests for amending some of those existing, uh, conditional use permits. Uh, the Plan Commission ultimately, uh, does recommend, as you see in the minutes, that, uh, the requested conditional use permit be approved with an additional condition not previously identified, that being that the new storage buildings, both of them, shall not be occupied until the site is brought into full compliance with our previously issued C U Ps for two thousand and five Hawthorne Avenue, either as they now exist or as they may be amended prior to such occupancy. So that basically means if there needs to be compliance with these C U Ps, we understand, um, that the folks that own the property will probably be applying for an inferment of Plan Commission seeking to amend some of those earlier conditional use permits at the July meeting that may be back in front of council in August, which I understand would be pretty close if all goes well for them for a, for completion of instruction of these, uh, storage buildings. But it would be necessary, whether it's the current C U Ps, because those conditions govern right now, or whether it's amended versions of those C U Ps, which is dependent on an application and review and approval of that application. There'd have to be compliance with those conditional use permits before use of the buildings could commence. In other words, rental of them for storage by customers. So that's what is back in front of city council. I do think it would be useful and I appreciate Matt's role is to, to help others, for him to present the information that was presented at Plan Commission last Monday. We do have a handout as well as the ability to bring it up on the screen. And per the council's earlier, or the chair's earlier direction, it would be the opportunity to ask questions to the Ross's with the applicants here in the front row, it will be the opportunity for a public input from the applicants or the registered partners that have a couple of papers here. Uh, I, before Matt gets started, I would note that, uh, I did receive last week, Wednesday, June eleventh, uh, an email from, uh, Richard Schultz. Uh, he, um, basically, uh, expressed some concerns, uh, about the Plan Commission's recommendation for approval of the application, speaks to, uh, the current zoning of this commercial property, uh, violations of, uh, existing conditional use, uh, permits, and talks about the city, the need for the city to fulfill this responsibility, uh, by monitoring the applicants, and I guess I would say any applicant's, uh, ongoing, uh, development or operation of property under a conditional use permit. Uh, Mr. Schultz did subsequently, uh, ask my assurance that this communication was provided to council members, so that's why I was emailed out here this morning and, you know, coffins tonight. Uh, so I would submit that for the record and note that each council member has received. Matt, over to you.
Uh, there's actually two sets of information within the packet that I just provided you. Um, one was from a site visit I did on, uh, June fifth. Those are the photos, starting, starting in. Um, and want to jump a little slightly, Craig? I think you have this for Tom. I.
Okay, the interested parties have, okay. We want to go to the others?
Yep. So, first photo is of various signs that, uh, were out within the terrace area or near the terrace area, signs and whip flags located within both right of you at Hawthorne Avenue. Uh, the next one is location of some U-Haul equipment, uh, by the, uh, approved, uh, conditional use for U-Haul, uh, equipment. All that equipment was supposed to be stored on the east property line, uh, on pavement. And this is not in proper location, so keep it simple. Um, as of driving around, uh, the site, I noticed that there was landscaping materials, uh, landscape equipment, um, on the building, uh, the mini storage building, there was a directional sign, which was contrary to the approved site plan, um, and things of that nature. So, uh, just trying to identify some concerns, uh, issues that I had seen, uh, after, uh, the June second, um, city council meeting and the public hearing. Uh, additionally noting that, yes, there's a dumpster in a picture, but there's also other bulk storage materials for the auto, uh, transmission dealership. There's also, uh, other notch being able to see, being seen in these photos, but there was some landscaping materials, uh, sod and equipment not stored, again, in proper locations. Um.
It was actually a provision for outdoor storage, that sort of stuff.
We'll get to that in the written memo.
Okay.
So, um, there's also then a greenhouse out there, which, uh, is a permitted use, but there's other landscaping materials noted on site, uh, river rock, stone, uh, soil and mulch. The next picture is again more landscaping materials. Um, and on a drive-by, um, that I didn't take a picture of, there were some hanging flower baskets, uh, that were for sale, um, and by the approved C U for the landscaping business, uh, it specifically stated no sale of merchandise related to landscaping. So, uh, and then the last picture is of, uh, additional landscaping equipment, uh, again, not stored in a proper location. A proper location for the equipment was supposed to be on the west side of the property. So that's a quick overview, uh, of what was provided on, uh, to Plan Commission. And then prior to Plan Commission, uh, Mr. Buckley and I met with the Ross's out on the site and, uh, went through these photos and noted as Frank has stated that a lot of these issues were already being addressed before we got out there. The whip flag are gone. Uh, a lot of U-Haul equipment was stored in the right location. There was a couple of U-Haul signs still directing drop-off to be done in an improper location. Uh, landscape equipment was all over to the correct location. Uh, the screening of the site was already being taken care of. So, a lot of this was already done prior to the Plan Commission Meeting last Monday evening. Uh, but what I did in the written memo is addressed by C U, uh, conditional use authorization. Um, so the, should be twenty twenty-one, not two thousand and one oh five. Uh, the Ross Auto and Transmission Service LLC, within the conditional use, uh, permit, it stated that there was supposed to be no outdoor storage. Again, recapping the photo, there's used store, uh, used tires, scrap metals and materials noted to be stored behind the service garage. Uh, in order to allow that modification to the existing C U would need to take place. Again, no outdoor operation. Vehicle service and repair shall be provided within the building. Um, it has been previously noted, um, with people driving by, that occasionally, uh, parks and materials might be stored outside occasionally. This again could be part of a modified conditional use or prohibited altogether. Uh, the dumpster, uh, is located behind the building and screened from the adjacent properties. That's a conditional use, uh, or a condition of the conditional use. The existing dumpster is stored at the rear of the building and is intended to be screened with the vegetation buffer that has been, um, provided. So, conditional use twenty twenty-one oh six for green acres landscape. Again, outdoor storage of vehicles, trailers, equipment limited to the designated area of the approved site plan is allowed, however, during the earlier site visit, there appeared to be landscaping equipment located all around the property. Again, as noted, no retail operation of storage or landscaping materials is specifically called out within the C U. The sale of materials and goods along with the storage of landscaping materials has been noted to occur on site. Modification of the existing C U would need to take place in order to allow this activity to occur. And then a tree buffer, um, replaced with additional trees or six-foot-high fence if the tree buffer will disappear. Replace or replace the trees or fence will be required. Uh, right now, the tree buffer, uh, is being modified, uh, on top of the berm. And conditional use twenty twenty-one, uh, Two Rivers Storage or T R Storage LLC, uh, there should be no outdoor operation or storage. The directionality of traffic control was contrary to what was shown on the approved site plan. And per the October eleventh, twenty twenty-one, uh, Plan Commission Meeting Minutes, the property owner has planted several trees to provide additional screening to the north. Um, and then the twenty twenty-one oh five U-Haul Rental Service, which should actually be a twenty twenty-three, um, but the storage of U-Haul rental equipment was not in accordance with the approved site plan, a modification to the existing C U would need to take place to allow alternate parking locations as desired. So, long and short is, uh, modifications to before existing conditional use permits could occur, um, if applied for, if brought forward to the Plan Commission, Plan Commission approves these modifications, council approves these modifications. A lot of the activities, uh, could be, uh, performed as I think they desired, but were not called out in the original conditional use permits. So, as, uh, Frank had noted, I believe we have a path forward, a parallel path with both the proposed storage units to be constructed, uh, assuming that you approved tonight's conditional use, and concurrently modifying or modifying the existing C Us or modifying their practices on site, uh, to come into performance with existing C Us. So, all could occur, um, in a parallel track. And, uh, if one legs one way or the other, uh, i.e. these storage units get done first, the existing C Us don't get modified in a timely fashion, they cannot rent out the units as, uh, agreed to mention. Lot of moving parts, but I think we have a plan forward.
We, we had discussed this as staff with the city attorney and the, you know, council. We, there are clearly some things that were, that are happening on the property that were not anticipated in the conditional use permits that are in place. You can't change those overnight. It requires an application, review, public hearing, back to council. Uh, this is path. There is obviously some risk to the applicant because none of us can sit here and guarantee an outcome. Uh, the worst case would be being required to comply with what is on the books right now, um, as a condition of opening the additional storage. But it would allow that parallel path.
Um, for modification, do they get charged the same thing as what they do for the original?
The city has to jump through the same hoops, including, uh, running legal ads. I don't know that we need to charge three hundred fifty dollars per.
Yeah, I was asking.
C U, I don't know the answer to that right now. We're modifying for separate conditional use permit. Technically, it may be four separate ads. I don't know what the answer to that right now. If we could go, we could act with the attorney a bit more about that. Sean, I don't, I don't know that you're in a position to address that right now. Certainly, the city could consolidate that in every one legal notice for possible amendments to multiple C Us. I.
Can you give the last few sentences, you know?
Okay. Basically, I, I don't know that you know the answer right offhand, but the question came up if we're, if the city, if the applicant wants to modify four existing conditional use, or maybe three existing conditional use permits out of the four that now exist. Um, the question was, this, this, do they have to pay the, what is now three hundred fifty dollar per conditional use permit application fee? Uh, my response was, I, I don't know what the city, if the city can do a combined notice, legal notice, then I don't see the reason to be collecting a thousand and fifty dollars or fourteen hundred dollars from somebody. Uh, but I, I just didn't know that off, 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 because it's the same.
I don't think, I either added a little bit of the ordinance or whatever, but I, I think it wins all the attention. And I think, I think there'd probably be. It strikes me as, for that same reason unfair, that the city would charge a fee if the same amount or is not required for each CUP. That is in this case, I mean, I have to look at what the city is specifically, how the ordinance is doing.
I guess I can certainly indicate from staff standpoint, give the attorney advice, we could do a combined notice. Legal ad is supposed to do three or four separate ones. It's, we notify by mail, all property owners within 200 feet. Well, there could be either one notices or four separate notices stuffed in the same envelope. So if there aren't demonstrated additional costs to the city, like having to hopefully separate legal ads, it would be my intent to treat this on application. That's kind of the answer I can give on the fly.
What I was thinking.
The language here is per application that's heard. So I guess that is a matter of how we characterize this, is this a single application that seeks open new CUP for additional monitoring and a modification for existing? Or is it multiples application, they're all presented together? I imagine the board would need much closer reports, this is an application that seeks a modification as well as the issuance of the whole conditional uses, I think I've dealt with that more to be sure.
I don't know, will we even call storage a question?
What I was thinking is, it's being used for the same thing. If you're going to move where something's parked or where it's stored and it's still in that property, you have to have it amended. But that's thirty thousand dollars just to say, well, I'm going to move this piloter from here over here so it's located in a better spot. Or like with the U-Haul stuff, if it makes more sense, I have it on one side property than the other. That would just seem on the charge for a whole new permit instead of just amendment.
The U-Haul one, I think it's an easy one, it's clearly just moving the equipment. It would be more the landscaping one where it says no onsite materials. While they want to store or have available, basically the landscaping materials, so salt, soils.
Supposedly they don't have.
They, that is, that's prohibited right now, correct.
There was a couple, there was some stuff here or there, it wasn't the right spot.
Nope, that is, that is totally prohibited under the existing CU. And that's what they ultimately want to potentially modify. Same thing with the, same thing with the outdoor storage of materials for the auto business. There is nothing, there's tires, there was car doors, there was scrap metal, et cetera. They are in some cases waiting for disposal, but by letter of the CU is prohibited. So they would need to have that either short term storage or more longer term storage, however, that gets worded in a modified CU. But in any case, it needs to be modified.
Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I, because some people are questioning about the zoning. That particular property has been car repaired for a long, long time. It has to be over forty years that they were car repaired.
Sixty-five years, sixty-five years.
Oh, sixty-five, okay, I didn't know for sure. And then, I don't know what happened, if the owner died or whatever he did, it must have been up for sale. And then it became a car repair again. And I, and they didn't last very long. And then it became a landscaping thing and now it's both. But my point is, I don't, I don't think anybody talked twice about having these people move in because there's always been something like that. And I can understand why people don't like it, but I, I just wanted to make that comment.
I looked up when that was, when the property became what it was and stuff in the nineteen fifty-three. And when someone builds a new house next to a business property, they should assume that the business property is their business. And I, I'm not trying to be unthought over, it was that when the house was built. So if someone knew who buys that house, they can't really complain that that was there because it was there first. That's what it seemed like they were making a lot of that we got.
I mean, clearly it's had, it's had business selling for many years, it's a business use. Even our comprehensive plan, interestingly, you know, we talk about future land uses in the cop plan. The frontage portion of the property on Hawthorne, even in the future land uses plan shows as commercial. Now somehow, when the plan was done, it identifies residential use on the river frontage portion. Well, it's one or two parcels now that run from Hawthorne all the way back to the river. So, but it anticipates continued commercial activity on that site. Now will I sit here and say as a city, we fell down on monitoring, policing, checking, you know, tapping the permit holder on the shoulder and saying, oh, wait a minute, there's an issue here that's not compliant, yes, we need to do a better job of that, yes. I don't know that you want to commit to something like an annual review because there are quite a few CU's up there and there's costs to doing that. And I don't know if you want to uncover folks that receive a conditional use permits with that ongoing cost. You want the taxpayer with the cost of that monitor. But I think there are enough things here that we should have been mindful of. I feel like the city fell down and that's contributed somewhat to the situation we have. You know, clearly, Green Acres and the affiliated businesses had signed off not very long ago on conditional use permits that had provisions that maybe weren't the best in terms of the ability of the business to operate there. So that's why the plan commission has recommended this possible solution. But I, I think as we looked at the minutes and I reviewed them with our zoning administrator, I think it does come down to by what's proposed by the plan commission, the council will make a decision is by the time this use commences, renting out those storage spaces, there needs to be compliance with the conditional use permits. And that's whatever conditional use permit is in place, or in place at the time it opens. Right now, that's what's on books. It may be something different, none of us consider tonight and guarantee the outcome of a process that involves a public hearing and deliberation by the supply of plan commission.
If they have dumb trailers that are, and material in them and it's a registered trailer, that's not considered storage for the dumb, it's in a trailer? Hey, is.
Hypothetically, yes.
As long as the trailer was parked in the right spot.
Yep. I, hypothetically, it would be cleaner.
Yeah, and a tough location move.
Yeah, but I think what's requested is actually more vault storage, I'd perhaps.
I know at the plan commission, we had talked about the fact that there needs to probably be an updated CU. Just based on the car even repair business, it's almost impossible not to have all of those. If you live around Two Rivers, I can look at that block, all the places that service cars and change tires, all the tires outside. I don't know what else you go over. I saw oil bins outside at someone's place that I assume the oil changes. Yes. But you see those kinds of things out there. And yes, do they need to be screened? Yeah, and I think after I did travel to that site, I think when the plan commission meeting was last Monday, I did notice there was a lot of trees that they gave in one of your pictures that she showed us or had for our plan commission. There is a, trees that were planted there to help screen some of that. Also a picture that's up on our screen, those buildings I think would be coming down and replaced with a smaller mini store building. You should actually look at a lot of that, you can see there. So, I mean, at plan commission, we felt it was a good idea to move forward with this. To make sure then that they're in compliance before that they could rent them out. And I think that's fair to allow them to get started and say, hey, if you want an updated CU, go ahead, get that in. Otherwise, getting compliance and having done before, you can rent them out, otherwise you don't get to rent them out. At least to allow them to start building during the building season to get this on board.
We will, I will pledge this, this has been a practice in the past that we apparently got away from. We will provide notice to all property owners within 200 feet of property in advance of the plan commission meeting. As well as the ordinance required notice that's given before the city council public hearing. That gives people in the neighborhood a couple of opportunities for input, a couple of opportunities to attend the meeting. And frankly, the earlier on in the process, we solicited that feedback matter. I wasn't mindful, we got away from that practice. And state statute requires legal ad, city ordinance adds the requirement for mailing to everybody within 200 feet. And we had as a plan commission established a practice of doing that same pale notice to, for the plan commission. And I expect if we have application in hands timely and complete for the July plan commission meeting or a special meeting. Probably be a part of that meeting on site, so we can, picture's worth a thousand words, but sometimes you can handle it with five or six words if you're right there.
I don't remember for a CU, if they give you a template. I don't remember, it's a long since I didn't mind, it was like, this stuff you should have on there. Because they maybe have a suggestion for delivery time or pickup time or something to that. Because all businesses have deliveries, not that someone's going to lunch and they deliver something, they go, well, there's old site storage or something. There's got to be some leeway in this, some person doesn't need, they can get this figured for it.
And I don't think we initially whispered like the U-Haul amended it at all, if you pick up or drop off.
Right, for car parts.
Car parts, I guess.
Some tires and stuff, it's on the table, that's the whole time.
Yeah. Yeah, I see what you're saying. And certainly you might want to solicit any input from the applicants or other interested parties and independents. This isn't a formal public hearing, we all know it is a continuation of that discussion.
Any other questions up here for Matt? Any partners want to add anything?
I'm Bobby Mann, I live at 2011 Hawthorne Avenue. I do want to say thank you for the additions you did and the trees, it looks really nice. We do understand we live next to a business, that's not our concern, we're aware of that, we're using that property. I think our big concern was the upkeep wasn't there and they're certainly showing that they're doing it and it looks very nice. And we appreciate that and I think moving forward, I guess their concern is what's to say in three or four years? It's not going to go back to the traditional, it's not being followed. And that's not just for their business, it's any business that here a lot of it comes to. And I understand, we understand it's a cost and that can be hard and I understand that, but how do you fulfill that? I guess that could be looked at somewhere down the road, I don't know how that's addressed, but that is our concern. So they get more conditional uses if they're amended, which I understand, sort of tired, that's part of the business and you have to be able to store them properly until they're picked up, but how is that going to be amazing? To say that, does that follow through chicken? That's really been our concern moving forward now with that.
And I just interject, the council certainly could, if there's actions and they direct staff to visit this particular property and, and report back one year out from the time the use commences. I'm just suggesting if in the future that's to become a routine, say annual thing, that's where either the taxpayers bear the burden or maybe look at something tied to the CU and that means a burden on business. But given specific concerns, that would mean that's a burden on staff, come back a year from now. If there's a report on the agenda, council can either receive it and file it or say thank you very much and do the same thing again, twelve months out from now. I won't be here for it, but I certainly wouldn't object to council directing a report twelve months from this point. And we'll document that at the final, just at the final. The other thing is frankly, in this instance, with neighbors being mindful of the CU provisions to resolve the inability to place a call to resolve your car concern. Ask a question or file a concern. That's what I would just bring up. Excuse me, complaint driven, then that would be the other way that you could do it without having an annual inspection. Complaint driven, anytime you see something that you feel is out or you have a question, you could simply call the city and say, hey, this is not compliant. Can you check it out and you file that complaint? Zoning administrator will there take a look and have a CU in his hand and or she, if you just, will take a look and see if it's out.
Or ask the neighbor. Yeah, a business property, yeah, have a CU for that and you can, any card, as many cards as you want, as long as it's registered or call over, and you can. It's crazy, all the rules are different.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Nathan Schultz, 2011 Hawthorne Avenue, because I was only here two weeks ago when I submitted some pictures. And I think to echo what Bobby said, I think that we're, I mean, obviously we lost sleep over it, definitely we were going to discuss. And we talked to Ryan previously about him paying it off. And I, I just agree that maybe it's not our position to have to lease the property. I mean, I understand it's complaint driven, streaming can help, obviously, it won't be something that we see all the time. But there are concerns, the original pictures, as I said, that there were all oil storage things that I don't really know about. Are both safe, are a lot. But I guess if we don't see it, it's still a concern of mine, there's things stored that might be unsafe for my family. So, but yeah, I guess that's just something that we are a little concerned about, probably ensure that it stays the way. Also, I understand the alterations to the CUP is to add a little additional thing. I'm also concerned that it's just going to get bigger and bigger and bigger. When we purchased the property, it was a landscape company, single, single company, prior to that, an auto shop. Now it's a auto shop, landscape company, U-Haul and sold and storage facility. You know, it's not, certainly not what we expected when we purchased it, so. Yeah, I don't know, it's a little bit too much for us to kind of, I don't know what CUP belongs to, what things that are, are initiatives. Although I do appreciate all the work that they're doing for the screening, I think we definitely headed in the right direction.
I haven't been back up there since the night, but I understand some additional plantings along that common property line.
It's all the way back to the river, it seems, yeah.
Okay. Because that was one of the issues. The other thing, you know, Mr. Schultz's comments at the last meeting bringing it to the fore. And it'd be a tough change in a town that's grown up along the rivers. Some cities have different rules for shoreyards. You don't typically, you're, if you're back, you usually back up to the river and you have frontage on the street. And we treat shoreyards like that here, so that's where accessory buildings and parking of cameras and extra things and stuff happens. And I don't know that it was the main thrust of Mr. Schultz's comments last time, but the, the view from the water. We have only limited tools in that regard, at least as far as the standard zoning department. I realize that wasn't the main thrust, food for thought.
How much different Mr. Schultz, he knows of the power, he's very interested in what's going on in our property.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, I'm Ryan Ross, owner of Green Acres Landscaping and TR Storage. I've been in business for 25 years. For the whole 25 years, we've had mulch, we've had stone, we've had topsoil, all on site, everything is. Everything was wonderful. When we came here, I see what we cited that, just brought it along. Been here, we sell it, I bring it to job sites, I need it to work. So I looked up topsoil on the internet and it says it's an essential for landscaping. Not the accessory, it's an essential in it. So I thought maybe that can stay there. So I sell a lot of topsoil, we haul a lot of topsoil, love to do our jobs, although we have to make money. So right now, I depleted all the mulch piles and the topsoil piles. So I have to go buy it elsewhere and pay more just to stay compliant. There are some stone piles there, but we're just slowly diminishing them. Well, I don't want to haul them to another site. But that's put a little bit of burden on me, but we need to change the conditional use permit on that. So I have a thing here to read, but going through this. So say we put up the buildings, we spend $250,000. And I want to keep the mulch, I want to keep the topsoil. And I come back to you and I say, hey, I'd like to have these. And then Nathan said, no, I don't want those piles. So now what do I do with my $250,000 on buildings? Do I say, hey, I got to do the mulch business or I do the landscaping or do the storage? I've been doing most of it or both of them forever, let it continue on. So when we did buy the property, we inherited a lot of the, a lot of debris on there. We've been slowly working on cleaning it up. Sorry. So yeah, we know that his residential own property next to a business property. Excuse me. I planted 50 trees there last week. And then I planted 25 more. And then to address one Mark's questions, was it 10 more spruces? So going into this, we already have close to 20 to 25 per annum to move forward and are hoping we can move forward with retention pond remodel, screening of trees. And then also all the fees that we're running into. We ended up with E and R things. We started this in November, trying to get this going. And so, oh no, when is it going to happen? I got all the builders lined up, exclamation people, all squared up. So it is a concern, we're keeping it clean with the other building there, there won't be room for other things. But I also have a plan for the zoning people. I didn't know if I was supposed to bring it tonight or not. I made 10 copies of where we're going to put everything in the future. Should I end those up? Okay. So I don't listen to that topic for tonight, the topic for tonight is moving forward, the buildings. But on here, you'll see where our future location will be for the proposed building, 40 by 101. And then the one on the right, 35 by 100. In front of that, 35 by 100, we'll put that gravel, put all the U-Hauls there. This will be in a nice central area. Jake doesn't know, sometimes when they come back, sometimes they come back at midnight, sometimes they whenever and they're dropped out in the wrong place. Then also there are two stone locations and then the topsoil. I'll put the topsoil location close to the retention pond. So in case there is any runoff, it gets filtered through the retention pond and take care of the mulch. I have not a problem with that. But I do have the silt fence all along the back. Other than that, yeah, we'll have to work on where the tires and the bolts are. You see that next to the diners shop building there? So yeah, our intent is to move forward. We're sticking to something long term, like my kids and grandkids, they can sober in time. So we want to have this a good looking property.
So that kind of plan would be very helpful with any plan commission application.
So initially, when I emailed over to Adam, him and Matt were concerned that they didn't have anything in their city file saying it was D and R wetland or not. So we went on the D and R wetland site and it said it's not a wetland. If you click on something else, it says it's hydronic soil. The D and R told me, he said, if you click down two more, it says it's actually not a wetland site. This was all brought in over the last 50 to 70 years. So this could have happened in November. Except unclear navigating the D and R website. So I had to have the D and R come in, whatever, but they can't come until the growing season, which is April first. So I drilled a whole bunch of holes all over and it's just gravel, four feet down, stone rock. There's no anything that says it's wetland material. So my only concern is getting the buildings done, of course. And then hopefully they change the conditional use permits. Like I said, we're a little scared if we spend all the money, the bank still wants to get their money paying the payments back. We put the buildings there and I say, hey, you know what, I can get more calls for mulch, I need to stock mulch there. I'd like to continue to do that. Otherwise, if it's a no, then I have to buy some property outside the city of Two Rivers. And I want to invest in the city of Two Rivers. It's getting a little difficult. We want to keep things going high up there. Hopefully I addressed everything.
That lawn, 35 by 100, that's the name store?
Yes, that's where the two yellow buildings are. And actually, that picture was taken right when we excavated. So I didn't drive the excavator back to the other side of the property, which it sat there for probably a week, apologies. But that'd be a thing too. So say you see the mulch pile and the stone pile. So I take my loader over there, load up the customer, go to deliver it. I'm home, I'm tired, whatever, I don't put the Bobcat back. That's kind of not petty, but it's like, do I need to put it back in the designated places in the night? So right now, yes, obviously, but, or I call Jake and see if he can move it or something. The signage, before you show the signage. So I drove around the city of Two Rivers. I found seven different businesses or churches that have more than four signs. Currently still have more than four signs. I know there's no policing, but we took ours down, so we'll put up maybe two back, this is a big or something. So I'm not going to rant anybody out of it. It's kind of weird and I apologize for that, I guess.
I can suggest the only thing worse would be if we vigorously controlled it and slapped everybody.
That makes sense.
Hope you understand when, how to a situation of a property sandwiched on.
Right. No, I get it.
But I appreciate with any business owners here, we don't want, we don't want for Florida, an anti-business appearance. We jointly have responsibility, city and your businesses, for what's in these CUPs right now. It doesn't mesh with the reality of what we operate.
Right, right. Okay, I guess that'd be nice to get asked that question. You know, can we put up these two buildings and then will there be opposition to me to put the mulch and stone piles? I guess if there will be, then maybe we reconsider putting up buildings. I don't want that to be the case.
I don't think that's, I'm actually the answer, unfortunately here. That's got to go, we, the proposal's going to have to be seen by the public commission first to get rejected or whatever. And other that, so the council will have a public hearing before that can go any further, so that's.
Pay your pension, that's just.
Not the night that we can say today.
Yeah, so pay your pension out, we want to move forward with the storage buildings. That's what we're going to do. Okay, whatever you can do.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, Mark. I'd like to move in over to 4:00 AM on Monday, 17. Her hand up, compliment me. Do a couple of work in the building.
No public hearing. Go up the slide. Or whatever, Dave. Do you want to say something else, sorry about that?
Yes, please, it may.
You're welcome.
As few of you know, my name is Jake Ross, I am the owner of Ross Auto Service. I reside in 2005 Hawthorne, I'm the tenant there and then the business owner as well. TR Storage, we've been around for 10 years now, we have over 180 units. This is in our first rodeo with the storage rental business. Two are in the township of Two Rivers and then this is our first of the city of Two Rivers. We're family owned, it's myself, my parents, of course, Ryan and Tara, and then my older brother and my younger brother. We all consist of this. We offer the storage, of course, you know how it works, the obvious, people in need. It's more of a, I don't want to say a moral thing for us, but we like to help people out, right? Where are you going to go when your time of need, when you're desperate for storage? So hand in hand, the U-Haul also works well with the storage units. I'd say maybe 20% of the U-Haul people are moving into our units or moving out or out of town or whatever the case may be. So when you put the statistics there, it actually kind of is a little surprising when people are moving in and, hey, I can return it here as well. So just touching a note on that. With our business expansions, obviously there's a reason for it. As there is any business, if you're self-employed, of course, you want to make a good amount of income or any income for that matter, you don't want to lose money. So as part of a future retirement, whether it's the family, myself, my next generation, my kids, grandkids, I want to carry this legacy. We're very proud of it, we put a lot of hard work, a lot of hard years in this. So it would be great to move forward with another expansion. We like to invest in the city. Like I said, it's not $10, it's a fair amount of money. So just, you know, I don't want to ride on hopes and dreams moving forward here. But some things I would like to note and to be revised in my conditional use permits. We've kind of corrected most of violations, if not all, the use of the signage up front. Whether that 11 square feet is a new permit, so that'll get a new permit if we want to have a sign up by the road. A lot of technical little stuff like that. So violations in the right of way, I do have a couple of statutes up front that somebody had complained about, which was in the right of ways. So. Feet towards my property to be 100% compliant. Outdoor equipment during the day, if I am unloading a set of list is outside, a city council member or a neighbor might drive by and complain about that. Tough luck, I don't know what else to say about that bluntly speaking. It's not operational in my business. If that piece of equipment's outside over the weekend, overnight, you know, that's not okay. That I totally understand. But this is the functional operation of my business where it's essential. If that's not allowed, I might as well not be here in Two Rivers. It's pretty emotional for me, especially I have not been 100% compliant. I will own up to that and make it correct. But when I feel I can't operate my business here in town, it makes me pretty emotional that I shouldn't even be here. For lack of a better term. I want to be, I'd like to bring business into Two Rivers. The U-Haul attracts a lot of people. My area field manager, which is pretty much my boss, so I'm an operations manager at my location, obviously. So my area field manager pulled up the statistics on Two Rivers alone for rental residents or, yeah, so renters. The storage, not searches, U-Hauls, U-Haul rentals. All of those customers in Two Rivers, there's also almost 64, or 6,400 people that have rented U-Hauls the last five years. So you put that statistics out there, it's kind of a lot of people. So there used to be a K and L storage, or K and L, the RV and the camper center that used to have U-Haul rentals there as well. He said, I've been doing that a couple of years now for that U-Haul. It's been rather busy, it's been, it's been great. But unfortunately, there are a lot of people moving out of Two Rivers. I don't have an explanation why, but just my traffic I see is kind of weird. I get the flow, you know, I have the college kids coming in and then the people moving out of town. I see a little fluctuation of everything, but. Kind of going back to everything I have as far as operational, things of business and then our signage as well. The tires things are getting corrected, tire storage is getting corrected. As far as pickup, I have set up bi-monthly, every other month, it's getting tires picked up as the maximum I, or the minimum I have to go. I cannot call in, hey, every, every seven days, I'm not allowed to call in and say, hey, my tire's picked up. Because that's another $100 surcharge, you know, for six tires, eight tires, you know, and so on, you know. Every, every week is different, of course. But yeah, like I said, I think Adam, we drove around the other auto shops and I'd like to have my conditional use permit revised to outline all this stuff. But I was going to pull the files on the conditional use, make sure everyone else is compliant on that. Because if I'm overlooked, I mean, is there other people that is as well? I don't know. But I want to be compliant as well, I want to match everyone else, make sure everyone else is following. Not that we're being singled out here, but there is a lot of stuff that we have not been compliant on, you know, with admission, of course. But Nathan, I would like to note, I mean, you are my neighbor. I appreciate all the concerns and I want to be mindful of you guys. And I guess you've been a renter since 2023 of ours, just on a single unit. Either of us, Ryan or Tara or myself, we're home call away. I live on the residence, I operate on the residence, I have the office space there. I would like to, you know, come on a common ground here. If there is an issue or I left a piece of equipment outside that's nice or I'm making too much noise during the day, whether it's an operational stuff or whatever the case is. Feel free to come out and talk to us. You know, obviously we weren't happy with everything and it is our own fault that, you know, that the property condition has declined. Very obvious, we know that, obviously. We get so used to during the day, kind of, so sorry. We forget to put something, something away, whether it's a machine or all the landscaping stuff, it does happen, so. I do apologize about that, I would like to get that amended, keep the, keep the property green, but. I mean, as a renter, I don't know how often you guys come and visit, once a month or a couple times a month?
Um, nothing, during the school, they're down.
Okay, gotcha, sure. Yeah, well, whatever it is, I mean, you're, you're my neighbor, you're totally welcome to take a look at the property. If there is anything I'm concerned, I don't know if you guys love a former or a former staff.
We appreciate that, we want to be on the terms.
Yeah, absolutely.
We want things to be.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I just don't like disagreements as my, you know, my old neighbors. We can go out and have a beer together or whatever, but I just don't like meeting on these terms as it is much at home than it is our businesses, but. So unfortunately, we're there, but I want to get this all amended and get this all taken care of, so. Anything you guys have questions for, for either of us?
Yes, sir.
First of all, you guys have really made just a tremendous effort to work with your neighbors, which is, which is wonderful. Because not everybody does that, so. And you guys are trying to become, you know, compliant. But you guys have businesses and I don't want to see you in the city, you know.
I don't want to either, no, it's hard to relocate the way it is.
In your business, this is your livelihood. You know, we really have to take that into consideration. As far as we, I've heard nothing about noise. So I'm going to assume and it's not an issue with the visual. Greening, I mean, that can be taken care of so easily. And I think that the CUPs should be changed or should be tweaked to allow you guys to run your business at, you know, at the max. But have it in different places so it's not obvious. And I know you guys don't want them to lose their livelihood, you know, so. And keep working with, you know, together. But I think that, to me, you know, visual is aesthetic, absolutely. Whereas a business, I don't, I, you know. But you can work with them and make, you know, there's a happy medium. And I know you're working toward it, you guys are awesome. We've been major of roommates over the last two weeks, three weeks.
I have another question, this was brought up with like Boyle.
Okay.
Is that monitored by the state? Um, is that monitored by the state or D and R, they wanna know how you're storing it, or what you're doing with it?
As long as it's a clearly labeled container, where I have a sticker, it's a four-by-six, it's got the waste oil on it. Uh, then it's in regulation with the state. The D and R wants gets involved if there's a chemical spill, um, say, you know, I leak more than ten twenty pounds. Uh, if something, if it's something major.
Sorry, is there a drum?
Yeah, so I do have a M four drums and then a two hundred and seventy-five, you know, uh, IBC totes, they're plastic lined metal cage totes, uh, which are permitted for storage as well. So, yeah, it's, uh, we do do a lot of little changes there, so you might see two totes outside, or ten that are full. Um, I do have a company that comes and picks them up, so, uh, within a timely manner, you know, not everyone can bring a semi over in a heartbeat to pick them up, unfortunately, but. Uh, we do have other uses for the oil, such as a, a burner for the heat as well, so. Yeah. So, to, uh, to eliminate the cost of natural gas, I mean, oil is a lot cheaper, almost if not free, compared to the natural gas that you eat in the shop, so. It can get very expensive.
Who else?
Yeah, Mark. Do you have any questions, Mark? Does anyone else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Mark. Bill, come to the discussion.
Seeing none, I'll move to a roll of the mantle.
Ashamodis?
Aye.
Got seconded?
Aye.
Adam Haskins?
Aye.
Darrell Leclerc?
Aye.
Mark Brenner?
Aye.
Ken Derby?
Move standing, play a roll.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Doug Brand?
Aye.
Ken Mead?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you all, appreciate you guys, everyone's a moment, thank you for coming tonight and us to play as our council. Thank you very much. Uh, to be set a public hearing and propose zoning code amendment to rezone the property at sixteen Oyden Road Street from, uh, I want industrial, R three, one, and two, family residential.
That this, uh, was reviewed by plan commission, with a recommendation forward to council to approve the rezoning, all in public hearings, so the. And that would be set at public hearing, for six P M, for this next regular meeting, which is three nights, I'm sorry, three weeks out from tonight, on July seventh.
Then we'll begin promotion of that.
I don't make machines, you know, so, uh, public hearing for six P M.
Thank you. Thank you, man, any council discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a voice vote, if I say aye.
Aye.
And on post? Uh, on zone twelve, information only.
Uh, just to remind folks, this is a five Monday month, and I think it was generally agreed at the last meeting that we would stick with our normal practice when there are five Mondays, that they can work session on the fifth Monday. Is that problematic? Still fair to sit away from the fourth of July?
June thirtieth.
I'm sorry, June thirtieth, yeah, I'm sorry, June thirtieth. Which means there'll be no meeting on the twenty-third. Uh, you've got regular meetings in July on the seventh and the twenty-first, and I also wanted to note that we are planning a public information meeting, which would, which, excuse me, at a minimal. Will be a joint meeting of plan commission, the environmental advisory board, and the advisory rec board. Um, that's on, uh, Wednesday, July twenty-third at six P M. With recommendation, uh, excuse me, with representatives of our engineering consultants and city staff. Uh, addressing the project on planning a resilient waterfront park plan, that is the shoreline planning project and. And modeling project as it relates to the shoreline, that addresses from harbor, south to the south city limits, and a little beyond, and the chamber of commerce. Uh, that's, that work is going on right now, as far as looking at future land uses along the shoreline. Looking at ways to improve on stormwater management, one more in thrive, what might be done on the city property south of the harbor. To reduce the, uh, drift of sediment that ends up in those shoals in front of the harbor, so that, you know. Corps of Engineers is being consulted by our consultant, Stantec. Part of the process is a public information session, which is this meeting on the twenty-third of July at six P M. There aren't any objections, I will also post that as a special council meeting, because act if, if all of you that serve as liaison to the boards and a couple others show up, we'll app for. Um, I think we will also make arrangements to, uh, to stream that meeting as well, we'll be here in passing. Uh, that is the intent there. Uh, that's all I've got, again, uh, our new city manager, Kyle, uh, is, uh, will be on board Monday, uh, August fourth, so he'll be here for the first regular meeting in August. I'm around at least through that week, and we'll have further discussion on, on his arrival in my apartment shortly. Uh, we do have a closed session on the agenda tonight, I would, uh, ask the council, uh, go into closed session, reasons noted, which the chair will read. There may be action and follow-up relative to the proposed property purchase sale matters, I'm not saying absolutely, but they're my thing.
So then, on number thirteen, closed session, the close, the city council reserves the right to enter into closed session per Wisconsin statutes nineteen dot eighty-five one E. Liberating, negotiating, purchasing of public properties, investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, never competitive or bargaining, reason require a closed session. Uh, discussing possible property purchase, discuss possible property sale. I'm motioning on the close, thank you, Tim, second by, I'll go first, any council discussion?
Seeing none, I'll do a roll of the mantle.
Adam Haskins?
Aye.
Darrell Leclerc?
Aye.
Mark Brenner?
Aye.
Ken Derby?
Aye.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Doug Brand?
Aye.
Ken Derby?
Aye.
Ashamodis?
Aye.
Aye.